Judge Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call?
Roll call, Commissioner Kennedy?
Here.
Commissioner Hewitt?
Here.
Vice Chair Smith?
Here.
Commissioner Corral? Brenda?
Oh, here. Sorry.
Commissioner Romero?
Present.
Commissioner Sae?
Here.
Commissioner Sterling?
Here.
Scott, everybody is here.
For communication, this is the time for any member of the public to come up and address us on any topic that's not on the agenda tonight. You'll be limited to three minutes and no action will be taken. Matt Kalman?
Okay, tonight we'll be electing a new chair and vice chair, so I'd like a motion.
Should we do the minutes first?
Oh, my goodness, yes.
Okay. Motion to approve the minutes from July 17 meeting.
I'll make a motion to approve those minutes as presented.
I'll second.
Commissioner Kennedy?
Yes.
Commissioner Hewitt?
Yes.
Vice Chair Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Corral?
Yes.
Commissioner Romero?
Yes.
Commissioner Sae?
Yes.
Commissioner Sterling?
Yes.
All eyes, Scott.
Now, we can, if I can have a motion to elect a new chair.
I'll make a move to promote the vice chair to chair. Addition for Kathy Smith.
Okay, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, do I have a motion to elect a vice chair?
I'll make a motion to nominate Bob Kennedy as vice chair.
The second thought?
Second, Kathy? Okay, I'm sorry, I didn't take a vote for chair. Commissioner Kennedy for chair.
For vice chair.
For chair.
Oh, for, oh.
We're electing chair first. I apologize if I didn't take a vote.
Oh, okay.
So, Commissioner Kennedy?
Yes.
Commissioner Hewitt?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Can I vote for my?
Yes, I guess.
Commissioner Corral?
Yes.
Commissioner Romero?
Yes.
Commissioner Sae?
Yes.
Commissioner Sterling?
Yes.
Okay, Scott, we have all eyes. Our new chair will be Kathy Smith. Okay, so we'll vote for vice chair. Commissioner Kennedy?
Why not?
Commissioner Hewitt?
Yes.
Vice Chair Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Corral?
Yes.
Commissioner Romero?
Yes.
Commissioner Sae?
Yes.
Commissioner Sterling?
Yes.
Okay, Scott, all eyes. Our new vice chair will be Mr. Robert Kennedy.
I guess if we vote for ourselves, that's proof that we weren't forced into it, right?
That's right.
First agenda item?
Thank you, Chair, Chair and Commissioners. The item, first item and only other item on our agenda this evening is a public hearing for consideration of a conditional use permit, variance, site plan, and coastal development permit to allow demolition of a vacant three-story apartment building and construction of a new four-story hotel with employee housing in the special commercial zone. The proposed project is proposed to be categorically exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act under a Class 32 infill development project exemption. The project site is in the coastal zone but is located in the non-appellable area. So, I'm sure everyone's pretty familiar with the project location. It is located at the southeast corner of Metropole Avenue and Beacon Street. It is located in the special commercial zone. Property to the north, which is the Avalon Community Church, is zoned commercial. And properties on all other sides, including vacant residential and the Beacon Senior Apartments to the east, the Hotel St. Lauren and multifamily residential to the south are also located in the special commercial zone. The property is currently developed with a three-story, 10-unit apartment building that was constructed in 1923 in a vernacular style with elements of a Mediterranean Revival. The apartment building has been vacant for approximately 20 years or more and has fallen into a state of disrepair. The building does not meet current building code standards for occupancy. Significant termite damage is present. And it has been evaluated for historic significance. And that evaluation, which was included as one of the attachments to your staff report, determined that the building is not historically significant. So, the project before you, again, is a four-story hotel with employee housing. The building would include 37 standard hotel rooms, four employee studio units, and a rooftop deck with an elevator, bathroom, and outdoor prep kitchen and mechanical enclosure. Hotel rooms would be offered for rent on a daily basis. And the rooftop bar kitchen area would be open from 7:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. daily and accessible to guests and the public. The applicant will return at a separate date if the project is approved for consideration of alcoholic beverage control license, so that would not be part of this project. Because of water allocation, the project currently has 10 bedroom or unit allocation that's kind of vested in the existing building. So, because of that, they have to, are proposing to construct the project in two phases. So, one would be, phase one would be demolition of the existing building, building of the hotel infrastructure, including the exterior of the building, and build out of the first floor and a portion of the second floor for occupancy. Phase two would be the build out of the remaining hotel rooms, finishing of the rooftop deck, and potentially converting three of the hotel rooms into a four-person occupancy. The reason that would come later is because the standard bedroom occupancy for SCE is two people, so if they want to have more in there, an additional water allocation may be required. The project is requesting three variances from the development standards for the special commercial zone. One is for lot coverage. 97% lot coverage is requested where 80% is allowed. Floor area, 383% gross lot floor area is requested where 140% is allowed. And the height of the structure, this zone allows for a 28-foot height. The south side of the parapet roof would be at 28 feet, but because of the slope of the lot, the height of the building would increase to 44 feet at Beacon Street with the addition of the 10-foot tall structure on the roof for the elevator tower, the mechanical enclosure, and the kitchen. All of the hotel rooms that are proposed do meet the minimum hotel room size that is in the municipal code. So, 90 square feet is required and between 194 and 230 square feet are provided. Minimum bathroom size is also required to be at least 35 square feet and 44 square feet to 60 square feet are provided. So, I've already kind of given you an accounting of the variances that have been requested for the project. So, variances are allowed to be, are permitted to be approved by the planning commission where there are special circumstances that may deprive a property of privileges enjoyed by other properties in the vicinity under identical zoning where a property is not granted special privileges beyond those on similar properties, and it does not permit a use that's otherwise not allowed. Though this property is of a regular size, the slope topography of the lot is unusual compared to the majority of other properties in the special commercial zone, which are by and large flat lots located within the flats portion of the city center. As a result, the development standards were more or less written for a flat topography and strict application of the 28-foot maximum height standard does not take into account, the way it's written for this zone does not take into account the slope. So, some of the residential zones in particular do have different standards for measuring for different lot slopes, but our commercial zones do not. Therefore, again, strict application would potentially allow for substantially less buildable area on a lot if it were strictly applied compared to other properties with a flat topography. The requested variances are consistent with approved development for other hotels with on-sloped lots within the special commercial zone. Two in particular are the Hotel St. Lauren and Casa Marquita, which were both developed under the same development standards as the proposed project. And Casa, Hotel St. Lauren in particular has variances that were granted for height and floor area not dissimilar to the proposed project. To give an example, the existing Hotel St. Lauren is anywhere between 40 feet to 60 feet in height at street level, depending on the location, with maximum height being where the elevator tower is located. And their floor area is, depending on the number you trust, in excess of 300% based on lot size. Therefore, with those things in consideration, it's the opinion of staff that the proposed variances could be granted in conformance with the findings in the municipal code. Item number two is employee housing. So, required by the municipal code, any new commercial development has to provide housing for at least 50% of their peak season employees. The applicant is estimating there would be four full-time employees that would be employed by the hotel, and they are proposing to provide floor for employee housing units. So, they're providing 100% housing based on their estimated employee count. So, on the face, would meet the city's requirements for employee housing, and they would be required to provide documentation consistent with the city's housing implementation guidelines in order to verify that prior to issuance of permits and then also up to annually as the project goes into operation to make sure they stay in compliance. Item number three that staff wanted to bring up was parking. So, the applicant is proposing to provide one onsite autoette parking space for the project that is designed for a commercial autoette that would service the hotel. In addition to the parking space, they are also proposing to keep an existing striped loading zone that's on Metropole Avenue to serve kind of the loading and trash enclosure area proposed for the building, and also establishing a new three-minute loading zone on Beacon Street at the entrance to the hotel to service kind of taxis, the city circuit, or other pickup and drop-off of guests. It's the opinion of staff that the proposed parking can be found sufficient for the hotel operation given that the primary use of the property is transitory housing and guests, so they're anticipated to be more picked up and dropped off rather than renting a golf cart for their duration and trying to park it somewhere. One possibility is that there could be up to four additional autoettes that could be parked on the street if the residents who stay in those, take up residence in the employee units qualify for residential autoettes. So, in order to qualify for that residential decal, you have to be a resident at least nine months of the year. So, it is possible that there could be additional residential autoettes that would be parked on the street. However, it's unknown, obviously, depending on who ends up living there. And it's overall a small number of vehicles compared to the overall number of autoettes permitted within the city. So, it was staff's opinion that this was anticipated to have a substantial impact on street parking in the overall flats area. Item number four is the rooftop deck. So, according to the applicant, the rooftop deck would be a gathering place for hotel guests as well as potentially visited by other visitors to the city. As mentioned previously, operations are proposed to be 7:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. daily. Any events at the hotel, such as weddings, would be required to get a special event permit prior to, to demonstrate compliance with the city's code requirements, including noise requirements prior to the staging of any event. Obviously, noise in rooftop areas in the flats is a very sensitive issue. So, one of the things that the applicant had to prepare as part of the document, environmental documentation, was a noise study. So, that noise study established an existing ambient noise level for the surrounding area and then analyzed kind of a worst-case sneered people on the roof plus all of the rooftop mechanical equipment going at the same time to determine what that difference in noise level would be. The results of that report showed that there would be an increase of no more than 2 decibel noise level even at maximum operations on the roof, which is considered to be a barely perceptible or unperceptible noise increase to the human ear. So, as previously mentioned, the project will have to be constructed in two phases. They have water allocation confirmed with SCE for phase one, but would not be able to be issued any building permits for phase two of the project until additional allocation is confirmed. I have provided findings for conditional use permit, the variances site plan, and the coastal development permit in your staff report. I'm here for any questions that you might have this evening. The applicant, Mike Flynn, also has a brief presentation he would like to provide you as well. Thank you.
Any questions for staff?
I'm not sure if it's a question for staff or a question for Mr. Flynn.
In the phases of this project, what is the timeline?
So, I can, he would probably be best in terms of when phase one would commence. Obviously, phase two depends on SCE.
So, do we have a timeline on SCE?
We've heard maybe this fall they might be able to start issuing new applications, they were, or allocations. They believe we're wanting to get started on phase two of the desalination plant prior to, so they would know that that water was coming prior to issuing any new allocations. But obviously, that's just, you know, what we've heard from it at this point. It's not a commitment.
Just asking to see, like, how long a construction site is going to be.
Five years, two years, one year.
So, prior to occupancy of phase one of the project, he would need to complete the entire building envelope as well as the interior of the building on all floors that aren't yet occupied, have to be rough-finished, and have all of the fire suppression systems installed and operational. So, there will have to be a minimum level of everything being finished up prior to even occupancy of what he has water for.
We're going to invite the applicant, Mike Flynn, to come up and speak before the public hearing.
Thank you. My name is Mike Flynn, 415 Alta Vista Avalon. I think Kelly did a great job kind of as an overview of the project, but I think it's important to know how we got here. Every year, or every year and every month, when I go through and I pay my hotel bills for the guys that work over here, our workforce that work here, I would drive by the corner of Metropole and Beacon and that building would sit there empty. And that started 28 years ago. And never saw anybody in it. And after about five or six years of seeing it, I called Lynn and said, hey, you know, are you interested in doing anything with the building? And at the time, there wasn't really an interest. And so, month after month, for that period of time, I've called her every month. And so, she finally got tired of hearing me and finally sat down and talked. And, long story short, we worked out a situation for the building. The Cameron family doesn't want to sell the building, so what it is, is it's structured as a long-term lease, which, what we have to do is we make all the capital improvements and build and construct and operate the hotel for a period of time. And then, at the end of it, it goes back to the Cameron family. So, that's the structure of our deal. We looked at a number of different opportunities for that site. And at the same time, as I was doing the marketing studies, we, I've heard, and we've had a moratorium going on for rental units and what people can and can't do with their properties, there's just a huge shortage for workforce housing here. I personally built 26 units up in Triana as my contribution to it is an offset to Hamilton. And those filled up immediately, and then people have lived in them ever since, and it turned out to be a nice neighborhood. But we need, we need more workforce housing. And when we started this, we had redevelopment funds from the state that would allow contribution from the state to help offset the cost to it because they're a loser. They, you can't make money out of it unless they're subsidized. There's huge state subsidy programs, but you have to fit in a particular square space to be able to get it to work, and it's very difficult to do an Avalon with what we have. So, it has to come from somewhere. So, if we don't have any more redevelopment funds and the city doesn't have any funds to do it, it has to come from some development and some other opportunity to be able to do it. And this, I hope, works out as an example that possibly that can happen. If you have bigger projects, just like this, I can live with 34 hotel rooms with no workforce. I have credits up in Triana that I haven't used that I could apply for that, but I don't think it's the right thing to do. I think we need housing. And so, in our hotel, there will be seven housing units dedicated to staff and to outside workforce. We're here Monday through Thursday as far as our working, and the guys go home on Friday morning or Thursday night. And so, it's available on the weekends to then share that workforce housing with other hotels, other special events that the city has, you know, for whatever. We're open to having anybody else use it for the same type of use as we're using it on the weekends, which seem to be a little bit busier and maybe have a bigger need. So, that would be the opportunity. And the big difference between the workforce housing and the regular hotel rooms, because they all have to function as a hotel room because of the way the ordinances are written, it would be at a markedly reduced rate. So, on workforce housing, we typically pay somewhere between $60 and $70 a night, whereas a hotel room can be two, three, and four times that. So, that's how we differentiate between the two. But back to the marketing study for a little bit. In Avalon, we have a lot of hotels, but we need more. And we need some nicer hotels. There are a lot of what I would call, you know, B-plus hotels, but there isn't any A hotels. This by no means is a five-star hotel. But there has been some remodeling, but not any new hotels since I've been here. So, hopefully, this will be the first one that actually comes up and other people can see what can be done. And maybe it makes a benchmark so people can take that as an example and go forward with it. If you look over at the two pictures on top, the picture on this side is a picture of the existing building. And the picture on the other side is the picture of the rendering of the new building. Big difference is that there is one more story on it. It's another eight and a half feet taller than what the building is today. And you have a glass elevator that goes down the front. And what I tried to do is upscale, or not upscale, just make it more current, but have it feel like the old building did. And the name of the hotel and the family, and I have come to an agreement that it'll be called the Cameron Hotel in tribute to the Camerons for having the original property. We also, in your books, and you've also seen here, we've got pictures of how it would fit with the existing buildings surrounding it. So, there's views looking up Metropole from, by the museum. There's views looking across from, by Vons, looking up the hill and how it would fit in that scale. So, you can see how, I think it fits and it looks, I'm happy with it. I'm satisfied with where we are with it. But what I can do is I'll just turn it back over to you guys and then answer any questions afterwards. But that's just kind of an overview from where we are, so.
Thank you. Questions now? Mike, can you maybe stay up there because maybe we have some questions? Does anybody have any questions for Mike?
I can't hear. Anybody have any questions for you?
Oh.
Nobody did.
I don't think anybody has any questions, sorry.
No questions.
Okay, so, we're going to open the public hearing. So, if anybody would like to come up and talk, please state your name, your address, and you're limited to two or three minutes. Three minutes? Three minutes.
Commissioners, Rock Goslin, 318 Whitley, managing partner of the Avalon Hotel, also on Whitley Avenue. I have to agree with Mike. This town is in desperate need of hotel rooms. I don't know how many of you commissioners are aware that in the last 20 years, this town has lost over 130 hotel rooms to other developments. It seems when a hotel property can no longer support bringing guests in because it's too deteriorated, too behind the times, too dilapidated, we turn it into employee housing. That's not too cool when we don't want to sell it to our visitors, but we give it to our own workforces. But this town is a tourism economy. And for the powers-to-be and also the private sector investors like myself and Mike and others that haven't put back into this community in the last 20 years, it's kind of a sad state of affairs. That stated, I think this is a great project. I think it's a great use of the space. I'm glad to see that something is finally going to be done with that building for the town. But I'm going to make some enemies here of the Cameron family and Mike Flynn. It's too grandiose. I've designed and operated hotels now for over 20 years. The Avalon Hotel was just the first of three I built here. I have consulted in other hotels and laundry facilities in Southern California and here on the island. What was drawn is not going to function. But saying that, your job is not here to be architects and engineers and designers. But something's going to have to give in that building. There is not enough space for luggage storage for a 37-room property. I would actually like to see it no more than about a 23, 24-unit property, axing the fourth floor. Even that, there's not enough maid's closet space, linen space, storage space. There's no allocation for a low-voltage room or high-voltage room. I don't know where the grease interceptors are gonna go for the restaurant. So what's gonna give? So I want to warn you guys of that. Is it gonna be fewer hotel rooms? So don't get all glossy-eyed thinking that there's gonna be a larger TOT paycheck to the city every month. Is it gonna be at the expense of some of the employee housing? Something's gonna have to give. Some square footage is gonna be, have to move around. The measurements for the bathrooms, giving you measurements of 44 square feet, that's from the center lines of the walls. These walls, uh, Mike, I'm sure are gonna have to be close to seven inches wide when they're done, because they're gonna have to be six-inch studding. Um, but I also didn't see any moment walls designed in this building. I'm sure that structural is gonna come back with some moment walls. They're gonna take out some square footage. Is it gonna be the expense of the bathrooms? And pretty soon, you're looking at, or maybe possibly below, the required usable square footage in these bathrooms. There's a lot of questions that need to be answered there. One, one piece of document says 100, uh, chairs in the restaurant. Others say 70. So what are you going to approve here? Um, some questions need to be answered there. There's, it seems like there's a project and a half in front of you, and I want to make sure that you understand that. Also, on an upside, um, there are technologies out there that provide for the capture and treatment and reuse of gray water within commercial facilities now. And that these rules are stated in California now to be, um, to be used. Maybe with proper-sized linen and laundry rooms and other equipment rooms, these technologies could be used in this property. And maybe it wouldn't have to be two-phased if it wasn't four floors. I think that going from an 80% lot ratio to a 90% lot ratio would be a nice gesture. 97% is asking for too much, I think. Doubling the, uh, available, uh, lot ratio to building ratio at 280. 380 is kind of a reach, I think. My partners and I were able to build a property, and we weren't even given what the zoning allowed me on my property at the Avalon Hotel. And we were still able to hit the top 10 a couple of times in TripAdvisor for North America for our property. Last year, we were number 13 in Yelp in the United States. And we didn't even get what we were allowed by zoning. So I think maybe a middle ground for what's being asked might be a better format. Thanks.
Thank you. Are we timing?
I'm gonna, I got it.
You got it, Donna?
I got it.
You state your name and address.
My name is Tina Conover Hayden, and my address is 310 Metropole. So I appreciate your time, and I'll do my best to consolidate a family introduction that spans generations, over 116 years of island history and almost 60 years of homeownership of the Conover Family House at 310 Metropole. Our great-grandfather was a carpenter that helped build homes in Avalon in the early 1900s. My grandmother attended kindergarten at the church on the hill by Beauty Lou and Marilla. Our grandfather, Harry Conover Senior, had a commercial charter fishing boat, the MV Harries, and trolled the channel and the island waters with my father, Cub Conover, as deckhand as he graduated, until he graduated high school. In the mid-'50s, our dad returned to the island in the summers with our mom, Estelle, and worked many seasonal jobs until 1965, when they purchased a property at 310 Metropole. Our home was built in 1908, and it's a quaint, two-story wooden house with three units that have served as our summer home and year-round rentals for 60 years. Our parents were very involved in the local community. Cub was a harbor patrolman for more than 25 years. Estelle volunteered countless hours for the Catalina Island Conservancy. They worked as docents for the Catalina Museum Society and were good friends, neighbors, and citizens of the Avalon community. With these strong family ties to the island, they raised their children at 310 Metropole. Those children have had many years where they were year-round residents as well and have continued the family traditions with the grandchildren and great-grandchildren of Cub and Estelle here at 310 Metropole, enjoying the wonder and beauty of our island home. For 60 years, we have lived at 310 Metropole, and we share a common property line with, and we've looked out upon the property located at 301 Beacon. The unfortunate decline and decay of the undoubtedly once-grand building has been ongoing for many, many years. While we look past the abandoned building, we still appreciate that there has always been a 30-foot open separation between the buildings. And now we are here. With absolutely no advanced contact or communication, we received notice of public hearing of the Planning Commission regarding the application of a conditional use permit, variance, site plan, and coastal development permit for the property located at 301 Beacon. Unfortunately, we were unable to access any information regarding this agenda item until it was posted on the city's website on Friday, August 23rd. In reviewing the 344-page document, we came to realize that development of the Cameron property had been in the works for months, and at no time were we, the adjacent property, ever contacted. It is distressing that in this day and age of technology and connectivity, we were given only five days to review, rebut, and prepare impact statements, as well as to speak to the Planning Commission regarding this development. That said, we are here to address the application to develop the Cameron Hotel, a proposed four-story hotel with a rooftop bar and restaurant. The developer is asking for some extreme variances, apparently to maximize profitability and comply with city regulations regarding employing housing. He is additionally including workforce rooms to accommodate the transient workers that he uses for construction projects, thereby increasing room needs in the hotel room inventory. Unfortunately, not wanting to keep the project within the standard size guidelines, the developer is asking for an extreme variance and rather than utilize the footprints of the current hotel that meets the stand, the set standards at 80%, he is applying to allow 97% lot coverage with zero setbacks on the side and three-foot setback from our property line, effectively obliterating any space between our properties. I would like you to imagine what this looks like from our point of view. From what were once views of blue sky and a bird's-eye view from the terraces of Avalon to the sunrise on the ocean, we will now look upon a 38-foot, four-story wall with windows on each floor only eight feet away. The devastating restriction of natural light and airflow, the undoubted invasive illumination and noise of a commercial building, not to mention the loss of privacy for our tenants and the decrease in our property value, as well as the rentability of our units, makes this extreme allowance to build out at 97% of the lot incredibly distressing. And if I go over my six minutes, can I borrow some from someone else? Or three minutes, can I borrow some?
You're good, Tina.
Okay, thank you. A once-quiet, one-way steep and narrow residential street, Metropole Avenue, is now jammed with high-density year-round rental buildings, duplex, triplex, and single-family units, anchored by the five-story, 42-room Hotel St. Lauren. In this application, the staff report suggests that the requested variances are consistent with approved development of other properties with hotels in the immediate vicinity of the area, the Hotel St. Lauren, built in 1987, and the Casa Maraquita, built in 1990. While these approvals may have been granted over 35 years ago due to existing parameters at the time, those factors are not relevant now. The Hotel St. Lauren, which was permitted with various extreme concessions, has led to numerous ongoing issues with horrendous 24/7 light and noise pollution, increased traffic and parking issues. These problems have significantly affected the quality of life for nearby residents, and specifically our property. And we have had to live with the consequences of the approval of a building, of building a commercial hotel in a residential area. Staff's argument, grounded in the earlier hotel's presence, fails to account for the current residential strain and community needs and raises doubts about whether another commercial development, the size and scope of what is proposed for the Cameron Hotel, is appropriate for an area already struggling with the negative impacts of past decisions. Given the scope and the size of this project that directly affects all aspects of my property, I would urge you to reconsider approval of the extreme variance request of 97%. Maybe a compromise would be to deny the excessive request to allow the Cameron Hotel to be built at 97%, and instead, hold to the standards as they exist today at 80%, which is the current footprint, more or less, of the existing building. This enables the developer to take the existing size and scope and build his beautiful hotel while maintaining the integrity of the already overbuilt, mixed-use, special-commercial zone and residential community of Upper Metropole Avenue. And if I have more time, I have two more things I'd like to say, if that's possible.
Go ahead, we'll put you with Tom.
I'm sorry?
We'll put you with your husband.
Okay, thank you. So a noise impact assessment was conducted on May 1st, 2024, to study the effects of the new hotel, specifically with respect to the impact of the project's construction, general operation, and the rooftop deck. While it was determined the impact of the project would not significantly raise decibel levels, I would like to argue that the ambient noise level used in this assessment are not indicative of accurate ambient noise levels we face on a daily basis. The daily operational noise from the Hotel St. Lauren alone includes noise from the open laundry room on the street, 22-in-wall air conditioners, with the potential to all be running 24/7 when the hotel is at full capacity in the summer months and generate traffic noise of residents headed to and from work daily. Given these actual parameters, a more detailed sampling should have been measured to gain a fair representation of ambient levels of noise to compare and contrast. How can the noise level not significantly increase with the addition of this hotel? And then the other issue that I have is the, the developer is asking for also the variance for lot height. And if this project is approved, how can they get a variance to go from the top of the second floor to go 28 feet? If they're going to be digging down to have a subterranean first floor, wouldn't the 28 feet start from where they dig down into the subterranean first floor to go up 28 feet? That's all I need. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Tina.
Good afternoon. My name is Tom Conover from 310 Metropole. And, uh, I'm here to oppose the granting of variance for what they're requesting. Sorry. I had it right here. Okay. I'm writing this to oppose the planned expansion of 301 Beacon Street. My name is Tom Conover. My family has owned the property at 310 Metropole, the next-door neighbor. Uh, the proposed hotel at 301 Beacon will directly affect the quality of my life as that, as well as that of my tenants, and I dare say, pretty much everybody on Metropole. With sound pollution, uh, air pollution, uh, lack, taking away of my space between my building and the, the building next door, it, it all plays into, uh, taking away from me. Okay? And that's where you come in. They come before you, looking for a variance to increase the, uh, room to lot size, as well as the amount of space on the lot, going from 80%, which is the, the standard regulation. Now, moving out to 97%, that puts the back wall of the hotel, uh, which is currently over 20 feet away, to only three feet away from, uh, from my house. Now, the drawings will show that there's a three-foot setback. In that three-foot setback, there's a stairway. And so there is zero room, zero feet room, from the stairway to the property line. I am three feet on the other side of that property line. So when I sit in my living room and I look up, I can see blue sky at about here. Okay? Um, with the building coming that close, 97% of the lot, that makes my look up and out up here. And if you look at... Do we have the picture that has the markings of the new building? No? There is a picture, it should be in your, uh, in your packet there, that shows, um, where the proposed new building is going to go back to. And you will see that where the red line goes up, no, that, that, it's a different one. Um, but it shows in there that where the red line goes up, it completely blocks off the, uh, the living room windows from my upstairs tenant. Now, this upstairs tenant, not only is he going to also lose his view out down Metropole, um, where the rooftop, um, food prep and machinery, uh, space is on the rooftop is right outside his bedroom window. So, please take this all into account when you consider variance of moving out to 97%. And also, going from the standard of...
Tom, would you like to take some additional time from someone else in the audience? Because you have to, you'd use your three minutes.
Okay, yes. Anybody want to give me some time? Okay.
You, Tina used your time.
Yeah, Tina used your time.
Jamie or Annie?
Jamie, okay, there you go.
Thank you.
Okay. So, right now, 140% of, of, uh, room to lot is allowed. They're asking to go to 383, which over-doubles the size of the building. If you look at the picture here, it shows you how large the building is right now. They're going to double the size of this building and put it right in front of my house. So I do request that you do not grant variance until a more reasonable, uh, proposal comes forward for going forward with their project. Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, hello. My name is Billy Boyd. I am, uh, one of the tenants at 310 Metropole upstairs. Uh, my girlfriend Violet and I live there currently. Been there for a little over a year. I grew up on the island. My family's been here for quite a long time. It's very hard for me to get on board with seeing another hotel being built here on the island because it's taking away from the housing for the community, for the people that live here. Um, I do see that there's gonna be seven employee suites. Now, that's for the employees. That doesn't necessarily mean they're gonna be hiring locals. It could be bringing people in from overtown to run their hotel, so doesn't necessarily mean that they're gonna be, uh, housing locals. I think housing's a big deal, uh, here on the island, but that's another topic for another time. So, the hotel, here, let me see where I'm at. I can only hope that they, uh, employ locals. Being that I am the neighbor to the construction site, I do have, uh, many worries. Uh, one of them being noise. And, uh, like you said, I think, I believe it was like 2% more decibel. I, I, I kinda, well, because we're right by the St. Lauren as well, you can hear those air conditionings go all night. I believe, you know, 37 extra air-conditioning units and fans for the kitchen and all that kind of stuff. It's kind of hard for me to, I mean, I'm not a scientist, I don't know the whole decibels there, but it's kind of hard to, uh, imagine that it would be only such a small number for so many units, so many air conditioning units. And, uh, not to mention the refrigeration for the hotel, which is gonna be right in front of us as well. But another thing, not only the noise, the privacy, um, it does show here on that site plan, the blue, which is the line, uh, just to the left of the, the red, which is going to be, the blue is the existing hotel. You go out to the 97% mark, which is gonna be, again, about, it's gonna take our distance between the two buildings from about 30 feet to about six feet. So there's gonna be a small alley between one, taking away the view, and the privacy. I think that's a big, a big one, is the privacy. I think that's a big, a big one, is the privacy. But starting with the construction, I think, I mean, I know Mike is out at Hamilton Cove. He does a lot of construction. But one thing that really worries me is how old the building is, right? It was built in nineteen twenty-three, so there's got to be some materials in there that aren't good for us. Asbestos, lead, and not only that, there's got to be mold. So during those demolition stages, that dust will not only come right in my window, since I'm so close, but it's dust. It's going to fly around, it's going to spread, and it's going to affect the area. I'm sure you have some ways to help with that, but that's one thing that I'm worried about, the air pollution. And I'm sure the surrounding area will be affected as well.
I apologize. Would anyone like to give the speaker their time?
That's it? Bummer.
You can take your girlfriend's time.
Violet.
All right. You have three more minutes.
Okay. So being that the site plan proposes they use ninety-seven percent of the lot, the distance, again, it's going to go from about thirty to six feet. Another thing that the neighborhood will also lose, as we've already kind of gone over, is parking. On the plan here, it has that twenty-minute loading zone, which is going to be right outside of that trash area there. And it also shows that Metropole is a two-lane road with nineteen feet. I didn't get the tape measure out and measure the street, but going on Google Maps, you can drop a pin from one side of the street to the other. I got sixteen feet. It's a very small street, it's one way, well, kind of, there's one side you can park on. So being that it's such a small street, I don't see it very plausible to have that twenty-minute loading zone on such a small area there. So again, with traffic during the construction zone, the construction stages, they're going to have heavy equipment, possibly cranes, to deconstruct that, and that's going to be taking up the sidewalk as well. So what that's going to do is going to push the walking traffic into the street. So you're basically going to be taking that whole side of Metropole. I don't see that being very safe. And again, it's going to push the walking traffic into the street and cause more congestion on an already small street. Now, I do understand that business is business, and something will be built on this property either way, but I feel that pushing it out to the ninety-seven percent and just getting that little extra is a little excessive. If it was kept a little bit smaller or near, near or close to the eighty percent footprint that's already existing, I feel that you could satisfy both the residents and also make your money too. So that's what I've got to say.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I note that when he was talking about the distance between our house, we did have a visual? I think you all have yes, so you can see where the building is. We tried to get it to scale, actual picture, and then the other thing, and it said it wasn't to scale. So, but yeah, that's what it's going to look like next to our house.
Thank you.
My name is Bobby Silman, and I'm here on behalf of Three Fourteen Metropole Avenue. As property owners of Three Fourteen Metropole Avenue and frequent visitors of Avalon, we strongly oppose the proposed development at Three Oh One Beacon Street based on the following factors. First, the proposed development significantly differs from the allowable development standards, specifically regarding the height limitations, lot coverage, and floor area. In each case, the proposed development exceeds what is allowed under the zoning regulations and therefore should not be granted special variances. Furthermore, it is doubtful that the city would allow similar special variances should neighbors want to develop their properties with increased heights and square footages. Second, the proposed development does not adequately supply onsite parking to an area that is already lacking parking for residents and visitors. Three, the proposed development would certainly limit and eliminate mountain and coastline views of Three Fourteen Metropole and neighboring properties, thereby significantly decreasing the rental value and property values. Four, at Three Fourteen Metropole, a quadruplex houses five Avalon resident families who live and work on the island. By limiting and eliminating the view that they pay for and have worked hard to provide themselves and their families, the proposed development is depriving them of the fruits of their labor and enjoying the coastline. Five, as precedent, approximately ten years ago, one of the owners of Three Fourteen Metropole Avenue helped stop a similar development that threatened to block the view of the property and neighbors. As owners and visitors of Avalon, we reiterate that the proposed development does not properly take into consideration neighboring property owners and residents of the city. Although we strongly oppose the proposed development, we do agree that a redevelopment of a deteriorating building would be beneficial to residents, tourists, and the city. However, it needs to follow the development standards as it is stated in the zoning code and not be granted special variances that deprive others of their enjoyment of the island. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Jason Mannix, Three Fourteen Metropole, Three Fourteen E as an echo. Just like others in the group, I didn't have a whole lot of time to prepare for a lot of this, but I just made several notes during the meeting here. Pardon me for jumping around, but just follow the bouncing ball. The only question that the board asked was there was a timeline, and I don't remember there was an answer for that. So that's an indefinite thing, whether it be phase one or phase two or whatever phases, there's no timeline given. So that means we could have random construction all year round, which is kind of difficult for us, and I'll get to that in just a few moments. What was not considered a whole lot was the several different issues that rental properties have, which I believe go side by side with hotel properties. Weekly, you all have different noises that come out, so your ordinance, as far as sound is concerned, is not on a consistent average basis. In February, it could be a lot lower than some of the other times. In July, Fourth of July weekend, it could be considerably higher. So that's considered only on an average, but as far as the local people that live in that neighborhood, it's extreme at those times of the year that it gets loud. Daily issues of problems are not considered. Daily issues mean one time you might have a fraternity party in your rooms, next week you have a sorority party, next week you have a bachelorette party. All of these different noise levels, all of these different problems and complications go side by side. As far as the locals, we're consistent. We live there daily. We live there weekly. If it was an apartment building, we probably wouldn't have a lot of those outside issues. Not complaining against tourists, but just complaining about the fact that you have a different issue, a different person every couple of days. Domestic disputes. Living next to the St. Lauren, which is a wonderful facility, they still have problems, they still have issues. I still see suitcases and items flying out of the window in the middle of the night. I don't want to wake up for these things, but they do. It's just, it's just a difficult issue. Then you have the policemen there, searching buildings, chasing people off the balcony when they're hooping and hollering and doing all of their after-hours yelling and arguments. As a tenant of Three Fourteen Metropole, my view is going to get eliminated by about a quarter to almost three-quarters of my view. That's a lot of my rent, that's a lot of the value of the business of the landlord, that's a lot of value of my apartment that I have, and I'm going to give it up to the back of the hotel. It's not going to be the front beautiful view.
Excuse me?
It's going to be the back of the hotel.
Does anybody want to give him more time?
Yeah, I will.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Three more minutes.
Thank you all. Appreciate it. It's probably going to have a fire escape in the back. That's going to be my view now. Back of the hotel, less desirable rooms in the back of the hotel. Probably my view is going to get lost to air conditioner vents, to kitchen vents, to a myriad of smells and odors coming out of that hours, no matter what time it is. It's going to be beyond quiet hours, it's going to be intrusive to where I live. The value of my property there is going to decrease. My view is going to be completely eliminated, like I said, by a quarter to three-quarters. It's probably also going to be the back end of the bar. I would rather not have a place that close to my establishment, my house, my home, that I have to hear all of the noise and all of the complications that go along with restaurants and bars. It's just, it's a little difficult to handle, and I've been in that place a little bit less time than the Three Oh One has not been developed. It was a, it was a place for eleven complete separate homes from the rumors and the stories that I've heard around town. Now you're becoming three time, three different categories of variance to expand beyond that. That makes it a little bit difficult for a pill for me to swallow. What's wrong with the original footprint of the original neighborhood and making eleven houses for people that live here, not another superstructure here in town that will bring other problems and complications with it? If you give me just a few more seconds, I'll kind of try to follow a couple of other things It's just going to be a little bit obese in the footprint that it actually has right now, and that's just going to be creating more and more problems. So I'd like to summarize with that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
My name's Zivi Avalana, Three Two Seven Metropole. I think I know some or all of you. I can't see any of you. But I used to be able to see better, remember? Anyway, hello. I wrote you a letter. I'm very sure you got it. Maybe you read it. I only talked about traffic. And I'm going to give you a little back history. It doesn't go as far as what I've just heard. But in nineteen seventy-eight, on April fifteenth, I took my first boat. I didn't know what Catalina was. Fifteen minutes later, when I hit the shore, I was sitting at a little restaurant having a continental. For those of you who don't know in the restaurant business, that's coffee and a cigarette. And I said to the girl who brought me here, "I'm staying." She said, "You're crazy." I said, "You already know that."
We blew our budget. Is that two fifty? Can you get a little bit closer? There we go.
Sorry? Oh!
Yeah, you're good.
We blew our budget for our whole trip on a two-dollar-and-fifty-cent casino tour. And we went, and we were standing on the patio. She said, "Are you really going to stay here?" I said, "Sheila, look at this. I can't beat this. Can you imagine living in this town on a hill and having a car here? I can't top that." Sheila stayed four days, I'm still here. And what really attracted me was the sense of community. I'd never seen one. People knew each other. They said hello. People knew that we bought a dress for sixty-five dollars, the first time I went in Hurricane Cove. I thought, wow, okay. But I liked it. I loved it. I liked the peace here. No, there wasn't a phone in anybody's hotel room. As a matter of fact, we didn't have an area code. It was the Avalon Opera right there, who knew what was going on at all times everywhere. And I loved that, and I still love this community. But today I came to talk to you about unity and community. And I want to shout out to Donna Romo. Are you in front of me? There you are. Okay. Thank you, Donna. Donna gave me a lot of time. I didn't read the three hundred and forty-four pages because I'm watching it live. Now, I lost my mind. And I think when you called me, Mike, on the thirteenth, and wanted to come to my house, you told me I had the best view on Metropole. I told you that was a given, right? And you said, "Could I come over to your house?" And I said, "No," because I was just noticing what was going on. I'm watching this live. Now, I am above it, but in the last few weeks and starting off with that call, all I've... Am I done?
Unless someone would like to grant the speaker additional time?
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay. So I've been watching this live. Actually, I have an album of pictures, okay? And on the twenty-first, the original date of this meeting, everything changed on that roof. Maybe you wonder what's going on. But what happened is, as I walk in my neighborhood, there's been nothing but grief, sadness, and upset. So my panties got up over my head and I lost it. Then I had to recover my peace so I could make sense. And Donna, I want to thank you for that. So what I really came to talk about tonight is the truth. You know, in Tahiti, which every dollar I ever made was in Avalon, thank you, that's how I got to Tahiti many times, they call gossip coconut radio. It travels faster than electricity. I try my best to sort out coconut radio and the truth. Do I succeed? Not always. It's difficult. And I have to hand out a shout-out to you. This decision is going to fall to you. I couldn't do it. I couldn't do it, but I appreciate it and thank you for that. And thank you for hearing me today. And I gave you your shout-out. I have seen this community unify. I have seen it happen, and I only saw it one time, and we were on fire. That's when I noticed, when I was awake for forty-eight hours hosing my building and the property on either side, that what happens to my neighbor happens to me. And whatever happens on that corner is going to happen to all of us as a community. This community is small. It's beautiful. I love it. During that time after the fire, there were no neighborhoods. It wasn't Upper Terrace, Metropole, I live on Whitley, and am I guilty of not caring what happened on Whitley? Yeah, I am. But today I'm thinking about it because this is going to change the everyday goings-on of my life in every kind of way. I just heard from Three Fourteen. Sure. Now, I'm going to ask you a personal favor. Now, I don't really have it coming, but I'm going to ask you if you're willing. Chief Seattle wrote a famous prayer, and it talked about, "You won't know me till you walk a mile in my moccasins." Well, I'm not wearing moccasins, they're sparkly little cheap shoes. And I would ask you, if you're willing, to just imaginarily, to put your feet in my shoes for a minute. And I don't want you to walk a mile, I just want you to walk a block and have a look. I don't know if there's anyone in this room who hasn't had something happen on their street, in their neighborhood, and yeah, we're back to neighborhoods again. So I'm going to ask you to do that, and I want to thank you for letting me come talk to you today.
Thank you.
Thank you. Can I come back up for one more thing? My wife is giving me her minutes. Once again, Tom Conover, Three Ten Metropole. My wife and I, we have three children, three beautiful children. The middle one, Stephen, is autistic, and he has been having a hard time with this ever since he found out that everything was going to change on our block. And he brought into my room this picture that was given to me by my brother-in-law, but he says, "Why can't it look like that?" And it's a picture of your house. Why can't it look like that? And I didn't have an answer for him, but I told him that I was going to come over here and let you know our feelings and what we feel is going to happen next door, growing up and growing out. And so just keep that, keep that in mind as well. He sleeps in that front bedroom, which is going to be three feet away from that stairway. And thank you.
Thank you.
Should we close the public hearing? Or does he want Mike flag?
Yeah. Um, if you'd like, you can have the applicant can come up to provide response to public comments.
Did you, you want to come up, Mike?
I'll try to take these in order. My notes may be a little scrabbled, so bear with me here. But I think one, I heard a couple people say, "The rooftop is not a restaurant. It's not what we had planned for it." It's, the actual area for food prep is 14 by 16 feet. I don't know anybody that could really operate a restaurant in that kind of space. It's intended for hotel guests and people to be up, and you see the picture on the front. More of a garden type of patio lounge type place for people to get out of their rooms and come up and enjoy the sun and have some space and privacy. So it's not, not by any means intended to be noisy and a lot of dishes and 20 waiters running around and all that. That's not what I'm proposing at all. It's a space for the people in the hotel primarily, and the guests of the hotel. There has to be, because of ADA, we have to be able to provide access for people that, you know, have handicaps to be able to get up there as well. That's the need for the elevator. And the elevator has to go above the floor, and that's why it goes up that 10 feet, and it's about eight by eight feet wide. So that's with the tall portion of the, in the front of the building that you see with the story poles. In the back, the tall poles in the back are the cover that goes over the patio area. That's an optional thing, but I don't know how many of you would feel comfortable going to the restroom without a roof over your head. So it has, you have to have some, there has to be some, that whole rooftop thing is only 20 by 24 feet. And in that, there's a front stand-up bar to, that you walk up to, you can get food or you get service from that. And then you have the restrooms. ADA restrooms are large. They're about seven by seven, seven by eight feet, because they have certain restrictions that you have to fill. So that's partly what that is. And then on top of it, behind that building, which again is not a restaurant, behind that building is an 11-foot area of storage before we ever even get to the edge of the roof. So that building that we're talking about with the patio cover is 11 feet back of the back of the building. So, and it moves forward to it. The front area is about 56 feet from the elevator to that, that building in the front. The carport area, they, down on the building in the front, next to the Hanovers, I met with them the first time a couple days ago. And I try to, anytime I hear anything, whether it's good, positive, or otherwise, I try to get together with those people that are involved or interested in what's going on and have their issues. I do it for two reasons. One is because a lot of times I learn stuff and things that I don't see from my perspective that they have their own perspective. And sometimes you can make those alterations and make everybody's life a little easier rather than have somebody coming in and trying to bully their way through. So that's one purpose. The other is to explain how we got to that point so they understand it as well, so that there can be a meeting of minds on both sides. I understand that today we have a little over 20 feet from the end of the building to the property line. And then from that property line to their building is five feet. So they, they're enjoying 25 feet of open space buffer. When I did this, I put that back, I put the building in the stairway and the walkways in the back of the building to help push that building forward a little bit. Right now, today, when you come up to the, to their level on the street, which is the second level of the hotel, because the lower portion is subterranean at that point because of the topography, what happens is, is that the wall of the building is 14 feet from the property line. They're, right next to the Hanovers property today, there's a carport. In the building, there's a carport. And there's a stairway. That stairway is an emergency stairway. It's not intended by any means to be able to go up and down that every day. And as far as people being in loading zone in and out of that area, we have elevators, but the elevators are accessed from the front of the building, not the back of the building. So I'm not going to unload towels and things for housekeeping and have them walking up and down those stairs. That's not the point. They'll go down to the elevator, and they'll push it down the hallway and go up to the right floor and go that way. So we have a, we have a four-minute drop-off and pickup area that's being planned. We talked to Department of Public Works in the front of the building, and that's where I would intend and see probably most of the deliveries taking place, because that's the easiest access to get in and out of the building. In the back, we do have trash. It's in an enclosed area, and trash comes by every, whatever they use, on a regular basis, and they'll pick up our trash like they pick up everybody else's trash. But there is no major activity as far as drop-off back on Metropole. And I agree with them. It's too narrow. So we wouldn't use that access if we don't have to. One of the other things that, um, right, right now, today, when you walk down the sidewalk and you're coming from Metropole down to Beacon, uh, we have ADA compliant issues, and there's a power pole right in the middle of the sidewalk. And I talked with Bob Greenlaw about it, and we actually went out and met on site. And there is an opportunity with, sponsored from the city and working with Edison on a, on a project called, it's a Rule 20 category, where there's, money's collected from wherever they get it from, from Edison, it goes into a pot, and the city sponsors certain funds. So that Rule 20 fits great with what this use is and with the, removing those power lines. So there is a pole on the, on the museum side of Beacon, and there's a pole on, right on the corner of Metropole and Beacon where this site is. And then there's one up the street, and then there's one toward Vons. So we met with Edison, and Edison, the pole that's on, closest to the museum on the other side of Beacon and Metropole, that pole is a primary, and it goes up to a huge transformer, and the cost of taking that out is probably as much as it would be for the other three poles. So we're working together on that, and the intention would be is, is that we would underground that, uh, that utility on those three poles and just get rid of them and go underground with them. When we do this, the sidewalk needs to be, because you've got poles in the middle of it, and it's been chewed up and beaten up over the years, it, all of that will be replaced. So we, our intention is replace the sidewalk and make everything fresh on that whole corner. We have ADA compliant issues as far as handicap getting in and out. So on that corner, we have to put the ramps in. Maybe we're tearing it up anyway, we're just going to build it new. Next to the Hanovers, the height of the building compared to what it is now is eight and a half feet taller. And that's because there's a two-foot parapet wall on top of that, and that's figured into that 28 feet. So the hotel itself is only 26 feet tall, roof to floor, but it's two more feet of parapet wall. Why do we do that? The reason we do that is because from the outside, you're seeing the structure. You don't necessarily see inside what's going on, but you see from the outside a blocked building, a shadow area. So rather than being able to look at everybody walking by and people sitting at tables and a bunch of legs for chairs and that kind of thing, it's best to keep it clean and put a two-foot parapet wall around it. That's why that's there. The other thing that we do is, is that we put another two foot of glass on top of that parapet wall. And that two foot of glass is a sound barrier and a wind barrier. So you have a four foot, basically you have a four foot wall around that whole top to keep things quiet. And it's, and again, we've agreed to no amplified music. We've agreed to, you know, certain lighting, so it goes with all the lighting ordinances of the city, hours of operation, all that stuff, that is totally fine. It's intended to be a soft, quiet, private place to go to and relax. Nothing more than that. Not a, not a frat party. On the air conditioning units, I've, I'm cognizant of that because when I go places, I like to make sure I don't, I've been places where you hear a lot of air conditioning. And around town, I hear a lot of air conditioning. So based on what the latest equipment that's out there and the quietest equipment, those are the ones that we'll be using, and we will do the best we can to sound, soundproof that as, so we don't hear it. I don't want to hear it. I know the neighbors don't want to hear it. It's up high enough, you shouldn't hear it. And I've met with them and talked with them, and it's been a big deal for me, and that's, I'm sure we can resolve that issue. In the back where that carport is, um, it's 20 feet. We would have it to be 14 feet now from the property line is what we're proposing. What I did when I met with them is listen to what they had to say, and what we did is we flipped the stairs to the access to the stairs so that they don't have a stairway right on their side. And that walkway, again, it's emergency access, it's not going to be used every day. That walkway allows them to take another four feet of that area between the buildings. So their front area would now grow to be nine feet, which I'm happy for them to use. And again, we're only going to use it if somebody has to get out of the building for a case of a fire. So that was one thing that I offered back up to them. In regards to housing, um, today, when I have people that come over here, and I've done this now for 19 years, we have our, our subs that come over, they have to have a place to stay. I can't tell you the amount of time that we spend calling up the hotels, trying to find out what's, you know, who's available, and I've got two nights here, and then I got to move them over here for another night. They got to take a break in the middle of their day, go get their bags, move them over to the other, I mean, it's a nightmare. So what I would do, what I'd have done is I had rented houses to put my guys in that we rent all the time. And it's, it's the only way you can really truly make it work unless you have someplace to put them. So a very indirect way that this will help is the one, the houses that I'm currently renting, I won't rent anywhere. I will just put them here. That's where they should go. And then if those rooms are available, we're not using on the weekend, I'm going to make it available to the rest of the community. Also, the suites that we have, if we get to a point where we don't need four suites, I'm happy to make that a condition to be able to use it for somebody who lives and works here as the opportunity to rent it. So those seven rooms are dedicated for that, and I'm fighting for that. I could make this just a hotel and reduce the number of floors and do what everybody's talking about as far as compressing it back. The problem is we don't get the housing. And the housing is really a key factor in the design. And as far as golf carts, we, I've talked with Kelly about it and Donna and, and the others. Originally, I had four golf carts, and the more I thought about it, I, I don't want, I really didn't, but we have to have one really for just pickup, going and do stuff. You're going to need one from time to time. So it becomes kind of a pool golf cart. It becomes something that, that anybody of the four employees can use it and be used for hotel activities. So we have one, and I've reduced it down to that one. So I, that I think satisfies those issues with, with the employees. And you, Kelly, you can help me with this. You have two types of rentals. You have a residential rental, which is for 30 days or more, and you have a daily rental. So one thing that we couldn't do, you don't have an ordinance that allows for workforce housing type rentals, which means I can't use it for four days or three days, and somebody uses it for four or three days, and, and call that a residential use. So it becomes a hotel use, because it's the only way you can control it. And I have to pay TOT tax or anybody using those rooms on those employees, I have to use, pay TOT tax because the only way to operate it is as a hotel room. If they had a residence address, now they can get a golf cart. But you can't get a golf cart if you're renting a hotel. So that precludes three of those rooms from having any type of golf carts. Our guys come to the hotel, we drop them off, we pick them up, we bring them back at the end of the day. I don't want them having golf carts. They're, they're here to work. So when they're up there, that's what they're, they're shuttled back and forth by us, not by themselves and individual golf carts. Billy talked a little bit about the, the construction and the debris or the nature of the building. We had, the Hazmat guys over here two weeks ago, they went through, they spent four days here, they went through and sampled everything in the building. It's loaded with asbestos, it's loaded with lead. Not good news, but it's, well, we, we thought we were going to deal with it. What happens is, is that on the drywall, the entire building has to be bagged. So the drywall has to be put into a seal bag and then put into a dumpster. And any of the other asbestos type products has handled separately. Everything is manifested, everything is put in dumpsters accordingly and noted, and every bit of that goes to the mainland to landfills that are appropriated for that. It's a huge endeavor, takes about 12 guys, and it'll take about six weeks to do. But for that building to come down, it has to be done by hand. Can't be done by machinery, except for the foundation. Foundation, when you remove the concrete, um, you're going to have a week or two of some noise, but after that, then that, that's all the noise that you'll have with that. We're not going to use any cranes, not any heavy equipment. Anything that we do during the course of construction, right now, as the building is designed, can be handled with petal bone. We do have moment frames, the moment frames are in the front of the building, and it has because of the elevator situation, but those are easily accessible. The dumpsters that we're talking about removing the trash from would be located at Metropole. We, when I built the museum, we kind of went through the same routine. What happens is, is that you have a whole barge full of dumpsters come over. You unload them, they all tend to be on penalty beach or scattered around wherever we can put them. We put some up in Hamilton. But then what happens is, is that we take one dumpster, they fill it up. I have one guy bring back a new dumpster, picks up the old dumpster and transfers it, takes it back down, and we get them all finished up, we load them up all in the barge, and we send them back over, and then they go to the appropriate landfills. So that's how the trash and construction stuff will work. The timeline for construction, um, I, I had to deal with, we were dealing with Edison. Currently, we have Gary Baldi breeding season, and they, I guess, have their activities until November. So after November, when that season is complete, now what happens is that Edison can move forward with their wells. And what I've told, what I've been told, we're one of the number ones on the list for new water. Then after that, they can fulfill the water issues. So in the event that they don't, I have six credits that we have up in Hamilton, plus I have 10 for the existing building as it's been used in the past. That's 16. So no matter what, we'll build the whole building. I'll frame and finish out and do all the rough plumbing, get it all ready for, because when it's, when we're partially occupied, you don't want people with saws and all that stuff going on while you're, while people are trying to stay there. And then we'll come back and do the finishes. But we'll only occupy the building as it's appropriate that we have water allocated for it. But the building will be finished and complete day one, but not occupied until we have the appropriate amount of water. Debbie made a note, and I have to just comment on it. There was a, there's a lady that, Jody, that lives up on, on Metropole, and, and she had some concerns about the building when we put the first story poles up. And so I talked with her for a while, and she said, "Well, I see this and I see that." And I thought, "Well, you know, is there any way that I can come over and see what you're seeing so that I can see if I can do something about it?" And so she said, "Yeah, no, I'm happy to have you come over. Come on over." So I, 15 minutes later, was at her house, and she told me, she showed me where she sat and how she functioned on her deck and her patio, and I saw exactly what she was talking about. And, and what I did is I went back and we, I met with my architects that weekend, and we lowered the whole building down three feet, because I didn't have the heart to put that building in front of her face as she was standing there, or she was sitting there looking at the view. So we did that, we reduced it down. When I talked to Debbie, that was a very successful way of approaching this. So I said, you know, "If you would like, I'd like to come over, that way I could see what you're looking at." And I don't know how I got taken, but hopefully it didn't take, take long. I was just trying to see what she saw so I could work it out appropriately. On this hotel, there is no balconies. And if you look at the exterior of the building, we basically have zero outlines on three sides, and how do you do this with a rectangular structure and not make it look like a shoebox? So I wanted to create some angulation. So we've deep set the windows, we've come up with different types of siding going in different directions, and we put a mansard roof, a parapet wall and a mansard roof on the top, so to give it some detail at the top and break it up. And I think the building, the way that it's come out right now, is, it looks, it looks really nice. I'm proud of that. And again, I think I just go back to recapture. We, you have two, two options in front of you. You have an option where we have a hotel, and it's just a hotel, and that's it. But if we're going to solve any part of this workforce issue, that's what I've tried to do. And hopefully successfully, but if not, you know, it's your, it's your call. If we don't do that, I don't know how we ever work ourselves out of this housing thing, because there's no alternative monies available anywhere. And typically, on the mainland, these things are offset by developers doing certain things to be able to do and provide those, and this is one of those reasons how we do it. So it's, it's a common practice. It's a little bit bigger than, than possibly people think it should be, but it's a, it's a balancing act. How do you ever get that housing if you don't move just a little bit one way or the other? So, and again, I'm happy, no matter what happens tonight, I'm happy to meet with any of the neighbors at any time during any course of this and sit down with you, work out whatever issues you may or may not have. And, and in advance, if you'd like to know what we're doing in advance, we'd be happy to make a time. doing in advance, we'd be happy to make a time for me, with you, and sit down and go over everything, so there's no surprises. So, I'll leave it at that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Wanna speak? No? Close the hearing.
You already, I thought you did, okay.
Is it too late? Did you just give me your time?
Oh, go ahead.
I would like to respond to a few things you said. You talked about walking down Metropole to approach Beacon. What do you know about it? What do you know about it? You don't live on Metropole, and Jody, my friend, who just gave me the moments, she recanted your conversation to me. I'm not gonna repeat it, 'cause it's hearsay. You know what you said to her, and you and I talked for twenty minutes, okay? I saw it on my cellphone.
I'm sorry, this is not a time for, you're supposed to be addressing us.
Oh, I thought I was supposed to be answering Mike, okay.
Not a time to fight with somebody.
I'm gonna say that, in order for me to know exactly what it's like, and as far as I'm concerned, I could be mistaken, but hasn't this city been looking at burying the telephone poles for a long time? Isn't that a complicated deal? Can you just put two or four under the ground? And you're gonna have to dig the ground up, that's gonna add to the time, and to the traffic. It is, obviously, by anything that's spoken tonight, gonna be a huge change. I know a change is gonna come, no matter what, all right? I'm not averse to change, but this is gonna be a big one. And, like I said before, I thought this was to address what he just said, 'cause he talked for a long time, right? So, pardon me, but I'm here saying, that what happens to that corner, does happen to the community, no matter what. We're just a little cute town, our eggs are in this little basket called Avalon, my eggs are. And again, I do thank you for doing this, this is a rough decision, thank you.
Thank you. I'm gonna close the public hearing. Any discussion?
I just have a quick question, or actually, maybe, Mr. Flynn was discussing, talking about the Hazmat coming over, are they gonna be doing all the demo, since it's all contaminated?
Yes, they'll do, I have one company doing all the demo.
So, Hazmat will be doing the whole project?
During the whole time.
Like, taking everything down?
Yeah, they have to be, it has to be monitored the whole entire time. They do testing, testing is not necessarily a hundred percent, but there has to be somebody there, and they all have to be licensed, and all the, the appropriate things that they have to do. We, we're not gonna mess around with the Hazmat, Hazmat has to be done.
So, they're gonna be doing the whole, taking it down?
Yep.
Okay.
Yeah, they do the demo as well as all the Hazmat, same company.
No, I'm sorry, the public hearing's closed.
I, I, I do have another question. How, who is the one who did the, the noise test?
So, the applicant had to hire an outside noise consultant, in this case, they're called MD Acoustics, to prepare that study, consistent with the requirements of the California Environmental Quality Act review.
Do you read the letters that were received and recorded?
Thank you very much for the reminder, so we, we do not read letters and record, however, I did want to note, at the end of the public hearing, that we did receive eighteen letters of opposition, and sixty letters of support for the proposed project, and those were provided to all of the planning commissioners ahead of the meeting.
Mr. Flynn, you, you did say that, just for clarification, you did say that the building would be completed, and then only, you would only occupy what you have the water for, right?
Correct. You know, again, nobody wants to live through construction. The construction part of it is, is not the fun part of it, the, the having it done and completed. So, for us, the quicker we can get in and get out and get done, obviously, we, we honor weekends, we honor holidays, we don't try to do, you know, in the summertime, I don't wanna be building, it's just, it's a nightmare. So, our push is to get everything done, have everything finished on the outside, so if it's not complete inside, it looks complete from the outside, all the windows are installed, siding's up, everything is done, but inside, in, for example, in the rooms, everything would be drywalled, everything would be roughed in, the flooring could even be placed or not, but you have to have it all fire rated, and have all the fire sprinklers operating in the whole building, but as far as anybody occupying, we would only occupy that portion of it, that we had water allocation for. So, and the city has to give you your C of O, so they have the way to police that and make sure that, that we were abided by exactly what we do have.
Well, why are you stopping, Mike? I think, what people were asking, how long is it gonna take, from, in your head, from day one, when you start doing demo, to being finished? How long are they gonna have construction there?
We, we would start the demo after, we have Labor Day coming up, so it would be after, it would be towards probably the end of September. It takes probably about four to six weeks to demo the building. I would screen the building first, which means, we would put a mesh and enter to controlled dust. All the interior has to be done first, so the bagging of all the drywall, every stick of drywall, every stick of insulation, has to be sealed in a bag, and then put into the dumpster. So, that all takes place first. Following that, then it starts to come down, as far as all the studying. So, that duration is, again, approximately six to seven weeks, according to the, the consultant and the bids I've got. From there, the building would be stick-built, except for the front portion of it, and there is a couple of support beams in it. So, I anticipate that I can get that thing framed, and windows, and everything from the outside, complete by summertime coming up. So, it'd be June, July, June, I would not work past June fifteenth, that's not my intent on the outside, would be done with it. So, we'll do a full court press start, to get the thing completed by that time from the outside. If we're working inside, we'll be working inside, but I can't get the hotel, until I have a point where I'm comfortable that we're not gonna be making a racket, for somebody trying to stay in a room, and, you know, we're trying to charge, that doesn't work. So, whatever work does after that point, outside is pressed to get done, inside can follow its duration, but normally, it takes about a year, year and a half to get done.
I think some people were kinda, just like, it's indefinite, when you, when's construction gonna be, when's there gonna be trucks out there?
Well, you're gonna have, with the demo, you would start, I would say, you're probably the, last week of September, you would have a dumpster sitting there, and being rotated out.
Two months, pretty much.
For demo?
Yeah, for the, for the Hazmat.
No, six weeks, six weeks. They'll, they'll come in with fifteen guys, and they'll load them up, and, and take, you wanna get rid of it, you wanna eat it, do it. I've got the barge, we have all those dumpsters here, I gotta fill them and get them back, and they get transferred, so, that has, happens a couple of times.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Stay up at the podium for just a minute, Mike. So, help me narrow in on one part of this conversation. You mentioned that you got with your architects, and made some adjustments to the, to the plan of the rear section of the lot. Is that how we see it now, or is that different than what's directly in front of us?
What we did is, let me, let me pull it up, I'll walk over and watch that.
Basically, what I'm getting at, Mike, is, you made mention at the podium, that there is a nine-foot separation between the Conover's lot and, and your lot. Is that between property lines, or structure to structure?
Donna, did you bring a marking pen? Do you have one up there? No?
I got a sharpie or a highlighter over here, if that helps.
Yeah, well, let's see if I can, let me see if I can describe it.
I think I have, the black sharpie.
It's gonna turn into a smiley face, if you're not careful.
Let me address the one that I can't address.
Oh, it was right on the one, sorry, I didn't see it.
There, from the, on the back of the building, assuming that between the Conover's and this property, is a straight line on a property line. What happens is, the three-foot offset setback, the building is thirty-five feet wide, so for the first fifteen feet away from Metropole, that far end, fifteen feet comes up to that three-foot mark. Then, it steps back, on the second floor, fourteen feet, for what would be five feet and fifteen feet, twenty feet of open space, where the cars, where the autowet parks, and where the stairs are. So, it's shaped in a little bit of an L shape, and set back away from the Conover's property. So, that answer, does that make sense?
Yes, so, in, in answering, in answering my question, and the rationale here, and what stimulates this, this conversation, is, what we currently are reading as a staff report, refers to a ninety percent, ninety-seven percent floor-to-lot ratio.
It would be less than that.
Do you know what that number is?
No, I don't.
Okay, thank you.
So, it's gonna be an L shape, kinda like this represents, which would be, that still represents the same thing, it's just more of an L, a bigger L?
Right here.
The straight line would be the property line, the top portion of it would be that three-foot setback, and then the building steps back another fourteen feet, from the property line, all the way down. The distance of the top rectangle? The distance of the top rectangle is fifteen feet wide, because it's a hotel room, and we take access from that off the corner, so it's just purely the hotel room. Then, what happens, is we have a central hallway of five feet, and another fifteen foot for another hotel room, so that's a twenty-foot span, and that's why it goes twenty feet, and then it steps back fourteen. So, the building does step back, and on top of it, on the second, on the third floor and the fourth floor, it only goes back eleven feet, 'cause I'm not trying to park an autowet there. And, on top of, all the way up, then there's no roof on top of the top portion of it. Again, it's an emergency access, with a stair that comes down, with a railing around it, so people can walk and take the stairs all the way up, if that makes sense, Mike.
So, what generates this question is, if you've already reduced it, from the ninety-seven percent floor-to-lot ratio, you've reduced it some, and if I'm doing the rough math correctly, I think it's closer to eighty-foot floor-to-lot ratio than it is ninety-seven, based on rough math.
Yeah, it's somewhere between the two, yes. The, the other thing, back to the issue with Jody, that you asked about meeting with the architects and dropping the building down, we had an original height to the building, which I think was thirty-three feet, from the highest point, which is at the top of Metropole, and after meeting with her, we dropped that down to twenty-eight feet. We're twenty-eight feet above, above the flow line of the curb of the street, which is where the city, Department of Public Works, and Building Inspector told us to measure from. So, that's what we did.
Is there anything in the code about what Tina said, about going subterranean?
Yeah, so, that was actually a good transition. So, the definition for building height, in Title IX, which is Planning and Building, or Planning, it says that you have to measure from a natural grade on the property. So, this lot doesn't have a natural grade, the back has been excavated, the, the footprint of the building itself has been excavated over time, so, the idea of building height is, you know, building height, or FAR, or any of these measures, is really to control, like, the envelope of the building, right? The bulk. So, because there was no natural grade, and we don't have a definition for natural grade, the, the determination we made was that the existing level of the street was the, kind of, the most controllable, most easily available place to measure from, to determine building height. So, even in zones where we have much more clear definitions for this, such as the residential zones, it's never measured, from like, if you have a basement, it's never measured from down there, it's always measured from kind of the overall height of the property, the lot. And that is where the measurements that are on the diagram you've been provided are measured And where the estimated building height for the existing building, which was provided in the staff report, that's also where that's measured from.
I'd kinda like to know the new floor ratio, floor-to-area ratio, Mike. Or, no way of doing that quickly?
The, the question, Mike, is a revised calculation on floor-to-lot, how does, how does staff do that?
How would, how would we do that?
How did you do it, to represent the ninety-seven percent?
So, we had the applicant do that as part of his plans, so floor area ratio is a measure of the square footage of the lot, so, you know, length by width, and that is divided by the overall square footage of the building, inclusive of all floors. So, it isn't just like a lot coverage, which is just the footprint, you're including all of the square footage of all floors. Now, things that are not included in floor ratio, by code of our, our floor area definition, are things like open, like the open roof decks, or areas that are not enclosed more than fifty percent on at least three sides, so things like an open patio would not be included. In this case, the carport for the autowet would not be included in floor area ratio. So, I did check those measurements, to make sure that those were, in the plans that you provide, have been provided in the staff report, I made sure those things were not included in the floor area calculation. But, the modifications to the plan that the applicant mentioned, in terms of moving the location of the stairwell, the open stairwell would also not be included in floor area ratio, but the changes to the plan that he has mentioned, that he has been working on, that is not reflected in the plans that you have right now. So, staff would need to see a revised plan, in order to confirm any changes to the measurements that have been made by the proposed modification to the back area of the building.
Ask him to do that? I don't know, how does anybody else?
I think this might change the, the lot coverage a little bit, to where it's closer to the numbers that you mentioned, I think what you may have been talking about is lot coverage. The floor area ratio, it won't significantly change.
Sorry? I just was knowing that one of them was gonna change.
One of them counts all the stories, that one's, we could do the calculation, but it's not gonna be really very much. It's gonna still be a lot higher than what the code allows.
That's the floor area ratio won't change, but the lot?
The lot coverage gets closer to what it is, and it's, the reason is, he has that a story higher than the building, or, it's, it's the, the number of stories. So, I'm not sure that'll make any difference at all.
Right, but some, but the lot coverage.
But it's the lot, the lot coverage does make a difference. The lot, the lot coverage is what the, what the neighbors are concerned about.
Concerned about.
No, wait, no.
Sorry.
Okay, as you're making statements, you're trying to change the lot, amount of lot usage, by this picture, where there's twenty feet, there's more than twenty feet between me and the building right now, which is eighty percent.
Yeah, I think we understand.
We understand that.
No, we understand that.
We understand that, thank you, please sit down.
I guess what I'm saying is, the lot area will change a little bit, and be more in compliance, but the floor area ratio, if they recalculate it, won't, wouldn't you say? Yeah. So, I don't know if we need to wait. I mean, we may need to wait for something else, but that particular...
I just kinda wanted to know what the new lot coverage percentage was gonna be, but that's fine, that's why I asked.
Actually, we could do that, actually, pretty quickly, couldn't we?
I wouldn't rely on my math, but, in my opinion, if there's something that you would wanna see a recalculation on, I would recommend that you continued the item, to ask for that additional revised information, so everyone's coming from the same place. so everyone's coming from the same place in terms of the information before you, rather than a napkin calculation.
If I'm the only one, then you're not the only one.
I would estimate, I would estimate it's probably about 800 to 900 square feet when you take out the stairwell. You take out the walkways and the stairwell. Because you're measuring, as I understand it, the building wall. It's the occupied space that is the coverage. So if you do that and you add it up by the four floors, that's going to be pretty close to what it is. It's going to be about 1,000 square feet or less. So it'll change, it'll change it overall, but it's probably going to change it. You know, I, I can sit down and figure out the math real quick if that's what you want, but.
I guess I just have some general comments maybe, without a motion. One is, in light of the project overall, having another hotel will diminish the need, hopefully, for as many transit rentals in single-family homes that we have. If we're trying to reduce that, the alternative would be hotel rooms. This one not only does that, but it also puts in housing. And then like Mr. Flynn said, when he provides staff housing for his workers, that frees up additional homes. To me, it seems like a really good project overall. However, that doesn't change whether or not it qualifies for variance. That's just, it seems like a good thing. Get to replace a building that's kind of looking scary in terms of, not in a haunted way, but in a way that if that thing caught on fire. I mean, it's, it's a little, it's a pretty significant part of town. But that doesn't change the variance criteria. When I read the variance criteria, I guess I agree with staff. I mean, it's, that's why variances are made. And look at the criteria. It seems pretty straightforward that it does meet the variance criteria. So that's what I'd like to comment on.
I could, let me throw this out. I hate negotiating on the podium, but throw this out. If we, I'd like to do it now. If we set the building back from the property line, but allowed for the stairs to be within that, that distance, 14 feet all the way across the back, what I would have to do is I would probably have to lose one, maybe two of the workforce housing rooms. So instead of seven, it would be five. But what I can do, what I would do is then have a full 14 feet plus the Canovers, the Canovers five feet, which gives them 19 feet from their building, which now they're enjoying 20 feet, 22 feet, whatever that number is. And that might be a reasonable compromise. But it, it would be, I would, I would lose two, three housekeeper rooms, which I can consolidate down below. And I think I could do it in one or two of the workforce housing rooms. And I think that that possibly could work.
I'm just curious. Why would it be only the workforce that you would be eliminating?
Because I'm thinking off the top of my head and I have no idea what I'm talking about.
I don't know.
I'm just looking at it in Sexons House Design. And that 14 feet, what's on the other side of that 14 feet on the other side of the hallway is three housekeepers' rooms. If it meant balancing in between, if I lost one workforce housing and one or two hotel rooms, I mean, I, we can, I can do that as well. We're reducing down this, what I have to take care of. So that means that I may be able to get by with two housekeepers instead of three. It may mean that we can consult, because the rooms downstairs, remember, they're set up for double bunk beds. So there's four people in them. They're bigger rooms than the housekeeper's room. So that's why I think that two of them would suffice for probably three of the housekeeper's rooms. But it's just if, if, if we can get to a point where we agree to the 14 feet, I can rearrange it with the number of units and live within that footprint. And that way, I don't think that necessarily will be decided tonight. As long as the footprint is X number of feet by, it's 35 feet wide. It would be 14 less than 90, 98. So it'd be 80, whatever that is. That's the size of what the building would be. And we would leave where the Canovers are 14 feet back away from the property line. And, and I would work with them to be able to use that property for partly their use and ours.
Motion to add those conditions to.
So you, in terms of decisions you have before you this evening, you could choose to approve the project with specific conditions. The ones in the staff report or any additional conditions you feel are appropriate in order to make the project comply with the findings for approval. You could choose to continue the project and ask the applicant to come back with modified plans that reflect the direction that you have given them this evening. Or you could choose to deny the project. And I would recommend if you did choose to do that, state specific reasons why in case there is an appeal of, and frankly, if you prove it as well, obviously, there's already findings. But so that there are grounds specifically if somebody wanted to file an appeal of your decision this evening. As far as staff is concerned, generally, I prefer to see if there's substantial modifications being made to a proposed plan, that those plans be modified so everyone can see what the actual impact of those changes are. If you chose to do that, we could, of course, continue the item to the next regularly scheduled Planning Commission hearing. Or if the Planning Commission gave us direction, we could try to have a, another special meeting ahead of that to shorten the timeline between the next meeting. But I think Donna wins the next regular meeting. What date is that? Me. It would be the third next month, which is, it'd be September 18th is the next regularly scheduled meeting.
Another issue I, or not issue, but another concern I had was just the traffic, the pedestrian traffic, and there's no crosswalk.
Should be one.
Wondering if that's could be part of maybe, and then I guess if you do a crosswalk, you have to do ADA ramps.
Yeah, yes. We would be working with the Department of Public Works to, all that needs to be cleaned up because there's nothing there right now. So definitely.
We could add that to our.
All right, I'm going to take a, I'm going to take a stab at this.
Bob, before you do that, can I just make one offering to you? Might make it a little bit simpler. If we agreed to move back, the back building line 14 feet off the property line and internally, remember, those workforce housing units are hotel rooms. And I've designated them to be workforce housing. But if we go instead of 41, we go to 38 hotel rooms and we back it back to 14 feet, that gives me that footprint to which to work with. And I have the opportunity, once you approve this internally, we can move walls around and things. I just can't get any bigger or change the footprint of the building. And that would be up to me to come back and try to satisfy that. And if I can't, then I'd have to eliminate whatever I have to eliminate on my side to be able to do that. But that way we can get this done. And I think it's a good compromise for the Canovers considering what they're, they're, they're only giving up a couple of feet now, not giving up a lot, so. So anyway, I'm sorry.
I did have one more comment. Of the, of this, right now with these plans, with the seven rooms, three of them are for your workers, right? So would the other four be considered for local employment? Or is it just anybody can apply from anywhere and come and live there?
My understanding is the rule is for the number of, commercial properties, the number of employees that you have, you need to show that you have housing for 50% of them. I've actually done more than that. I've actually provided housing for each one of them. Reality is if you're going to have housekeepers or a manager, the other thing is we have a manager onsite on premises all the time. So any noise and that stuff, I'll take care of. But the bottom line is, is that they, each employee of the hotel has their own, own facility, their own room. Then what we've done is provided three others for outside workforce housing for people. So I could get rid of the rooms, the houses that we're renting so it could be available to somebody else. That was the thought behind it. So we would still try to do that. And I just would have to consolidate and work some things around. If it means that we have to lose a hotel room or two, then that's what we have to do.
And when searching for the employment, do you, are you guys looking locally? That's kind of what I want to know.
Yes.
You are?
Yes.
Because I think that that matters.
Yeah, half of my crew, half of my crew now is local and half of it comes from over on the mainland. But the employees of the hotel would be local living here.
Housekeeping manager.
Yeah, exactly.
That, I honestly was wondering that.
Yeah.
Commissioner Romero, I just wanted to clarify a little bit the requirement for the employee housing. So the, the code requirement is that the business has to provide 50% housing for people employed by the business. So at a minimum, based on the applicant's estimated employment, which would be for staff members, at least two rooms have to be provided for people directly employed by the business. Now, that does not prevent them from, if they have additional rooms, there is no restriction on who they could rent those to, as long as they're meeting their minimum requirement for the business itself.
Thank you for the clarity.
Okay. I'm going to entertain a motion to approve this application in support and approval of the coastal development permit, the variance, the site plan, and the coastal development permit, and to include an additional requirement that the property must give that 14-foot setback as freshly proposed and that underwater, underground utilities be provided on the property and a freshwater hydrant be provided on the property. And this property, if the deck is occupied, providing food and beverage, that the top deck would be staffed by somebody on the hotel property. And last but not least, that there would be no golf cart permit issued excluding the permit for the hotel operation of the property. And that would be my motion.
You definitely can. I just wanted to jump in real quick. I don't, we would have to look at whether we're able to restrict the residential autowet permits for the employee units. I, I don't know whether that's something that you could condition or not, since if someone's a resident for more than nine months of the year, the vehicle code allows for, for an autowet permit.
Does it have to be a certain, isn't it just one address?
So.
How does that?
Technically, and this is the fun thing we'll have to figure out, is technically those independent units, we're not talking about the bunk bed workforce units on the first floor, but the four other housekeeper units in the, or the onsite manager. We are going to have to address those as units somehow. Because they are individual dwelling units and they are, they are set up to operate separately from the rest of the hotel.
So then would that bring in effect the, the whole thing about parking? Like when a new home is built with the code now that you have to provide parking?
It's, it's something that we had to consider as part of this. So it's part of the request to not provide on, they don't have to provide, they don't have to have onsite parking for someone to qualify for the permit. If they're a resident for nine months out of the year, if they're less than that, then they don't, they could only qualify for the standard permit. And then at that point, you have to have onsite parking in order to qualify for that decal. So again, I don't know that you, as a planning commission, have authority to supersede that particular part of the municipal code.
Because it's already in the municipal code.
And it's not in Title IX.
It would also cause an issue if a local got a job there and had to get rid of their golf cart because they now lived there.
Yeah. Yeah, I'd second that if you eliminated that one condition.
Okay, I'll eliminate that one condition.
I have, I have another question.
Wait, I'll go ahead and second it so we're talking about this. So seconded.
Did you want to add something to it?
Well, I just, I, I kind of thought maybe the crosswalk.
Oh, crosswalk, that is actually on my list. So yes, we'll add the crosswalk to it. Anything you want to add to it?
I don't, however, I mean, I agree with the crosswalk. I, I just have a question after, so I think it's for staff.
All right.
Can you say it again?
Yes. I'll make a motion to approve the application in support of the coastal, conditional use permit, in support of the variance, in support of the site plan, and in support of the coastal development permit, and require the proposed project maintain a 14-foot setback from the Conover's property line, as Mike suggested he would do, to require the applicant to provide underground utilities, a freshwater hydrant on the Metropole side of the property, to staff the roof deck when alcohol and food are being served, and to include, I've eliminated the golf cart requirement, and to put in a crosswalk.
I'd like to second that.
Take a vote. You can use your machines to vote.
Not coming up. No.
We'll just do a verbal. Commissioner Kennedy?
Yes.
Commissioner Hewitt?
Yes.
Chairman Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Brown?
Yes.
Commissioner Romero?
Yes.
Commissioner Say?
Yes.
Commissioner Sterling?
Yes.
All right, Scott, we have all eyes on the motion to approve with conditions.
Thank you, Donna.
Other business, any commissioner business, or did you have another question?
Well, I just want to say, I want to thank staff because I know this has been, you know, you really dug deep and, and you really questioned a lot. And I think a lot of changes were, were done and asked from start to, to now. And I want to thank Mr. Flynn also because he did reach out to a lot of the neighbors and, and by drop, dropping and working with them and changing things like he said he would do tonight. I think that's huge because we do have to consider our neighbors and everybody in this town because it does affect everyone. And I also want to state that, please, neighbors, it is a hotel. We do have an ordinance. 10:00 PM is the noise limit. Call the police. If the hotels don't respond, I say it all the time. We take note here. If it's filed, you file it with the city. There's, now we have a website that if there's any nuisance of noise in any, everybody, anybody's property, the city has made it easier for people in surrounding areas to make a formal report. Because if we don't know, we can't do anything to, to help mitigate that. And I also wanted to ask about the, the housing aspect to it. Like, does, at the end, after it's all up and running, do we, for him to come up with the 50% requirement, do the, does a city go in later and, and get the formal report on staff?
Yes. So at the time the property becomes operational, they have to provide us, as part of the implementation guidelines, they have to provide us a staffing report. Show us how many staff they have, show where they are providing the required housing, whether it's onsite or acquired offsite for that 50%. And the city has the ability to audit that on an annual basis to make sure that they are continuing to provide, obviously because staffing changes.
Well, I'm just asking these, this question because we had a couple of big projects that kind of got away with a few things. And we have a housing issue and we just don't want, you know, moving forward that it's not done properly.
Understood.
Mike Bonds?
Just to grab one.
Just to grab one.
I, I have done housing audits of some of the housing conditions for some of the, the projects that the planning commissions approved as it relates to housing. So, um, yeah, it's, I think the, the hard part is when businesses transfer.
And I, I also want to say that, um, we all know that there's a housing issue. We've been doing this for many years, and unfortunately, we can't tell people what they have to do with their property, what they can. And I would love that to be housing, but you can't tell someone that comes in what to do. We could only follow the perimeters of, of the code. And I'm very happy to say that, that building safety reasons scared me being there for that many years with all the, the lead and the asbestos and fires. So I'm really glad to see that it's going to be cleaned up and the sidewalks and a possible crosswalk, because that's always been a concern of mine, that corner, before this project. Thank you, staff.
So I don't think we had any additional announcements this evening from staff.
Nina, turn.
Good night, Tony.